This is a select board meeting of Tuesday, December 14th. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance led by Scott.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
Okay, hello, good evening, everybody. Just want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. And so just be aware of that. And all your questions and comments are also being recorded. If you do have a question or a comment, then you can raise your hand or use the Q and A box and we will hopefully see you and answer your questions. So with that, starting with open forum. So once again, we have a couple of long term employees from the town who are retiring and after years of service to our town. And so we certainly want to recognize them and thank them for their service to the town. So first off, Officer David Welch. Officer Welch has been with law enforcement for 33 years. He began his career in Westford in the police department as a part time interim police officer, but with a desire to become a full time police officer. And indeed, he was so committed that he self funded his education through the Needham Police Academy. And after he completed the police academy in 1991, he was hired as a full time dispatcher here in Westford, where he served until 1993, at which time he left for a little while to become a full time officer with the University of Massachusetts at Lowell. However, he saw the light and decided that he needed to come back to Westford. So in 1995, he returned as a full time police officer to the Westford Police Force where he has served since then. Over the last 26 years, Officer Welch has worked closely with the public schools from 1998 to 2006 as the dare officer, working with children and educating them about drugs and alcohol. And he also served as one of the police department's car seat installation technicians, which I know that many apparent here in Westford is very grateful and appreciative for as he instructed them how to properly install car seats for their children in the car. So he is respected and appreciated by his fellow officers in the police department and certainly by all of us here in Westford. So on behalf of the town and the community, Officer Welch, we'd like to say, first of all, thank you for your, all of your years of service here in Westford and everything that you have contributed to our community. Congratulations on your retirement and we wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you too, and the town, beautiful ground we're in.
Well, we are very appreciative of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you. All right. The other person who we are recognizing tonight and bidding a very fond adieu to is Betty Ann Stephar, I'm sorry, Betty Ann Stepharo. Betty Ann started with the town in 2001 as an administrative assistant in the Human Resources Department. She was promoted, or yeah, she was promoted to what at that time was a newly created position, the benefits coordinator in 2005. Eight years later, she returned to the HR administrative assistant position where she has worked there since, since, since 2013. Anybody who's ever come in contact with Betty Ann knows just what a caring, kind, welcoming person she is. If she didn't know the answer, she would always try and get you the answer. She has done yeoman's work in coordinating benefits across the town for all of our employees. She has been a fixture in the HR department for 20 years and we are all going to miss her. And we want to say again, thank you to Betty Ann and for all her contributions to our town. And again, we wish you well in your retirement and in this next phase of your life. So Betty Ann, thank you so much for everything that you've done for the town and for our employees in the town. So thank you. And then lastly, this is not, this is not a retirement, but we would like to congratulate our building inspector, Henry Fontaine. Henry has been appointed to the Building Official Certification Committee. And I must say, that sounds like a very official committee to me. But Henry has been appointed to that committee whose purpose is to basically oversee and manage and carry out the functions that are connected with the certification of building code enforcement officials here in the Commonwealth. It's, it's a committee that meets regularly. And over the past several years, has set standards and policies for the certification of building inspectors. So we are very pleased to congratulate you, Henry, on your appointment to this position. And we're absolutely thrilled that you're on the committee and that you'll be representing Westford on that committee. So congratulations to you, Henry. Well done and well deserved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, anybody from the board have anything for open forum? John?
I got a couple of things. One of, one thing is the Health Insurance Trust met for the first time this last week. And moving forward on that, Jody can probably add some more information if she'd like to. But we're moving on. We elected officers and moving forward.
That's great.
The other thing is, has anybody on the board heard of the North Central Climate Change Collaborative? Or anybody aware of that?
I know we've gotten emails about various different collaboratives. To be perfectly honest, I can't remember if that one is one of them that we've gotten emails about or not, John.
Yeah, it kind of run out of air, I think, of the select board there. But my question, I guess, is I've been kind of just looking in on it to kind of get an understanding of what they're working on. And I don't know whether they expect us to be part of that or not, or whether we would be part of that officially. We don't have any official connection with that, but I just want to alert the board. That's ongoing. They're having another virtual meeting, I think tomorrow night. But they're going through a lot of these things about climate change and just wanted you to be aware of that. And, and to see if, you know, we look, look at it, whether we want to be part of that officially or not.
Jody?
Yes, I think it's actually Pepperell. And we are attending that through Clean Energy. They do meet when the select board meets, usually on Tuesday nights. I'm not sure if that changed, but we are a part of it through that committee, John.
So next question will be, who, who actually represents us on that committee?
The Clean Energy participates with that committee. So yes, and we get all the emails. So they are participating.
Okay, thank you.
I think Beth, both Beth Perkins and Carol, Carol's down. Beth Perkins has her hand up, so I'm thinking that she might be able to provide you with more information. John, so Eric, if you could promote Beth?
Hi Andrea, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the CEASC is very much involved with the organization that John was just talking about. And tonight, I mean tomorrow night is the meeting and Mike Berlinski will be representing us tomorrow night.
Great, thank you. And in fact, Mike Berlinski just emailed and said, I've been attending the Pepperell NC4 meetings. We'll meet Wednesday nights once a month. So thank you both. All right, anything else for open forum? Okay, moving right along. We have our 7:05 PM item and it is a public hearing for a request for a change of manager on a general law, chapter 138, section 12, all alcohol in holder license for the Empire Regency Hospitality LLC, otherwise known as the Regency Inn here in Westford. And Sandra Morgan is the proposed manager. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Patty, are you out there? And is everything in order?
Hi. Hello. Everything is in order.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? So seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And Sandra, I see that you've joined us and you are all set. Okay, you're muted, but I think we understand what you're saying. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A second? All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, now we're at our 7:10 PM, which is a public hearing, which is a request for a change of manager on a general law, chapter 138, section 12, all alcohol club license with an AB and AC at Lake Country Club. And Kevin Carhart is the proposed manager. And again, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Patty, are we good with this? Patty, you there?
Yes, I think Eric unmuted me. Thank you.
Jody, I'm in, I'm in control too.
Oh, okay, all right. Jody unmuted me. Yes, this, this applicant and application is just fine.
Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second? And all those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. I need to go back for a minute. Carol Morse has sent me a message saying she's had her hand up since open forum. Actually, Carol, your hand is not showing up on my screen, but be that as it may. Eric or Jody, if you could unmute Carol?
Hello?
Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to make, I'm Carol Morse and I'm the co-chair of Westford Climate Action. And I'd like to make a statement on behalf of that committee. But before I read the statement, I would like to express my appreciation, our committee would like to express their appreciation to Eric Hydeman, who has given much of his time and much work to assisting the roadmap committee on the Clean, Clean Energy Committee. So the Westford Climate Action Committee would like to state that establishing a municipal sustainability position in Westford should be of the highest priority in achieving the town's goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. We cannot afford to delay in pursuing this position in parallel with the development of the overall climate action plan. Implementation of this plan will require significant commitment of the entire community to challenge status quo approaches to reaching this goal. In the face of our growing climate crisis, we need the expertise and leadership at the professional level to bring all stakeholders on board to efficiently execute this plan. Thirty seven other towns have taken that step. At a recent climate summit, Massachusetts Senator Jamie Eldredge stated that if he were asked what towns can do to combat climate change, his answer would be that their number one priority should be to hire a sustainability person. Although a sustainability position can pay for itself in grants, funding and reduced energy costs, it should not be the primary reason for hiring one. Energy managers provide much needed added capacity to their communities, freeing up staff resources and time, allowing for increased efficiency and added services. It is important to make clear that most positions in town do not produce definitive cost savings, but have real value to the community in many intangible ways, such as the health of the community. Creating this position is a statement that we care deeply about the environment and about the planet. It is a message to our children and their children that we put their health and the well, their well being above all else. And we thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate your statement. I'm, I know that it's certainly a position and a topic that we will be discussing as we move forward, both in discussing funding that's available as well as the town's budget moving ahead. So thank you very much to, for the statement to you and to the committee. Okay, going back to our agenda, we're at our 7:15 PM item, which is our consent agenda. And we have a request to approve the following. For the use of the town common, a Christmas Eve church service. The applicant is the Cornerstone Congregational Church. The date is Friday, December 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. A request for a banner for the Apple Blossom Festival Parade. The applicant is Stephanie Eck. The dates are Wednesday, May 4th, I think it's 2022, to Saturday, May 14th, 2022, in front of the JV Fletcher Library. I guess those are the only two requests we have for tonight. So is there a motion to approve?
Question approved, subject to the public safety comments and the case of the town common.
Okay.
Second.
And before I take the vote, Stephanie Eck, who's the proponent of the banner for Apple Blossom, has her hand up. So, oh yes, and she's writing that should be 2022. I figured that out, Stephanie. So we're good with that. All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Okay, we're at our 7:20 PM item. And this is a review of the ARPA funding requests that have been submitted so far and to determine initial allocations. So Jody, I'm gonna turn it over to you right now and let you drive.
Oh, okay. So before I drive into ARPA, did you all consider the item number five, the all alcohol for the NAB Country Clubs?
Yeah, I think we voted on that, yeah.
Did you vote on that? Okay, I didn't, wasn't sure if I missed that with Carol's raising her hand. So, okay, you're positive. All right, good. So moving along to ARPA. In your packet, we did update today because we did get a request today for the sustainability person. So we did provide you with an update that does include that, not for immediate concerns. But there's a lot of requests and we tried to put them in order of immediate. And we also tried to give some comments. So tonight, you're gonna start reviewing that. And I have everyone available who did ask for the funds for the immediate consideration. So I don't know how you want to handle.
So is there, first of all, Eric or Jody, is, so that the public can see, is there a way that we can get the spreadsheet up?
Yep, we can. We can't show the whole thing, but we can show.
I know you can't show the whole thing at once.
So maybe if we could just make it a little bit bigger.
And are these, these aren't in any particular order, right?
Well, we did them by department. So we did not prioritize, we just tried to group them by department. And so, you know, some of them were for three years, like the first one we're looking at, there was a request for three years of funding. Some of them were just for immediate funding. So, you know, we just tried to group them, yeah.
Okay, I think there are, I think that we can run through these so that, I think, so the public can become aware of what's being asked and without, without at this point deciding what, if anything, we're going to agree to fund tonight. But I think it would be actually helpful and I think good, helpful for the public to know and to see what requests have been, have already been made. And also for the various departments to also see what other departments are requesting if they haven't seen that already. So if we could, you know, sort of quickly run through them. If any, you know, if any of the select board members have questions about them, just raise your hand and we'll stop and answer any questions that might arise from them. After we go through them, if people who are watching, watching this have questions, please just, just let us know and either raise your hand or submit your question into the Q and A box. Speaking of which, Christina Green, just for Eric and Jody, Christina, Christina Green is asking if the FinCom members can be promoted.
So I guess we can. They're attending your meeting. So I don't know if you want them promoted as panelists or if they have questions, promote them as they have questions. It's, it's up to you.
You know, they've asked to be promoted, I think they're asking to be promoted as panelists. So why don't we do that?
Okay, so Eric will begin doing that.
But meanwhile, we can start while he's doing that. Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to run through it or are you planning to?
I thought you were gonna do it.
Okay, I'm happy to and I know Dan is here too. So the first request that you have before you is for the Community Wellness Coordinator, which is a recommendation by the Town and School Safety Task Force. And they're looking for $100,000 to be funded for the next three years to hire that person. The next one after that is part time help.
Stop, Anita has a question.
Sorry, I know this could be a long night. I was just curious if there was a little bit of background information. I should have asked this earlier to add to the spreadsheet of comments of how we got to the salary amount proposed here.
I would defer to Tom Clay.
We did have information about the salary level for this position in some of our neighboring towns. And so that was an input that we used to try to come up with a good ballpark number.
And I think it's probably important to remember, I mean, you know, this is, right now, these are just, you know, sort of recommendations. And if we were to hire this position, we would obviously do a more thorough and detailed market basket analysis in terms of, you know, what the salary should be.
And this does include benefits too, so. Okay, so moving along, the next request, number four, and we did put numbers so we could refer them easily. This would be part time help to, to host virtual meetings for boards and committees. I think since we started going virtually, much of our day staff is running a lot of evening meetings. So this would be to help them with that. And we kind of feel this is probably gonna continue on into the future. Number five is for the Abbott Elementary. And this is for a chairlift to be able to get a wheelchair access up to the stage. And this is a priority for the schools. Scott?
Yeah, so I guess this is one where we, we have two students now who would benefit from this. So I know that we're not necessarily taking votes tonight, but this is why I would like to see if we couldn't get, you know, funded tonight so we can get that moving for the sake of the students. And it's been discussed this on the Christian disabilities and that committee voted unanimously to push it forward as well.
Right, I was gonna say, we have a letter from the chair that, of the Commission on Disabilities, asking that this be funded in light of the fact that we do have two students at Abbott. And honestly, even if we didn't, I think we should take a look at that anyway since, you know, we're out of compliance with ADA if we have, you know, facility or that not, that is not readily accessible to anybody with a disability. So, and nothing prevents us from taking a vote on anything tonight, Scott. I just wanted to make it clear, we weren't obligated to take a vote on anything.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And I would just mention that capital has also, they haven't voted yet, but it is on the capital plan for fiscal year '23. So the next one is the schools are asking for an additional one full time equivalent district wide nurse for contract tracing, for COVID contract tracing.
And Jody, is this, is this one that they, they, they would also like to see funded as soon as possible?
Yes, these are all, all these that I'm reading you are immediate requests.
Okay.
So, and of course, Chris is in the background if you have specific questions too. But next.
Actually, hang on, I guess I would ask if we could promote Chris Chu and perhaps, you know, he could just give us a bit of background about why they're asking this and what's going on with the schools in terms of contact tracing? And what exactly, you know, what the nurses are doing and what their obligations have now become, given some of the policy changes at the school level?
Hi.
Chris, oh, there you are, there you are.
As I was being promoted, Andrea, I, I only heard half of what you said because it changes, it changes. So I lost the audio a little bit.
Okay, well, I guess it was a general question, Chris, in terms of, you know, what, what's prompting this? What are the policies that are in place now in the schools with respect to, I know, testing and tracing, you know, that are making this an immediate need for the, for the school district?
Sure, thank you. So this, this is part of the, we hired a district coordinator to oversee our test and stay program so that we could get that up and running. And so for the first part of that individual salary, we were able to use CARES Act money, but that, that ends on December 31st. And so this request is to use ARPA funds to help fund the second half of that salary for the spring. So that's why it's an immediate request, because we have actually, this person is in place. And we do know that we were able to access the CARES Act money in order to get the immediate person in place. But our hope is to continue it through the spring. So this person has been able to not over, not only oversee our test and stay program, which has been critical for allowing our students who have been identified as close contacts to test in the morning and still be able to go to school if they, if they receive a negative test. But then she is also able to then support our nurses. Sometimes whether a nurse has been out, she's been able to actually help support the, the building at hand or even just provide additional support because the nurses have been, you know, doing an incredible amount of contact tracing just within the schools as well, too. I don't know if that helps to clarify.
Oh, it does, yes, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Jody?
Yep, so the next one is actually also Chris, which is, they're looking for, let's see, de-escalation training for elementary principal aides. And they're looking for $2,000 for that.
Okay, Chris, before I go back to you, Anita, I see you have your hand up. I'm sorry, I missed it.
No, it's for this, it's this, for this one. So actually, it's perfect timing.
Okay, so, so why don't we, why don't you ask your question? And then Chris can hopefully incorporate it into his answer, okay?
Okay, sure. So if you like scroll all the way to the right, and you don't have to do that, Eric, but I was just, that question about train the trainer models was mine. Because I was curious, you know, I see here in the justification, and I know this is only $2,000, but it was like the impact of schooling, you know, on elementary students, they're showing a lot of signs of trauma, anxiety, and depression. And it seems like a good training that would, should be available for more than just the elementary principal aides. I would think that, so I was asking about a train the trainer type of model where those elementary principal aides would be able to then bring that information back to staff. So there's like a wider training, like catch that. But I just wanted, so like, I don't think the answer quite fit what my question was. I just wanted to ask it again.
That's actually, I appreciate you asking that question, Anita, because that helps me clarify it a little bit more, right? So we actually have a number of different training opportunities for the majority of our staff. What we're trying to do right here is to specifically train our principal aides who are only hired for part of the day. And so they don't have access to the training that our other staff members have. So the initial part of this is to actually pay them for time outside of their contract hours in order for them to receive this training. Because I agree with you, building our capacity within the district so that we can have more people training other people and sharing that, that information is, is critical. We do have that, and some of our trainers are actually, some, some of them are actual people that we have on staff who then we would be paying additional hours because they would be doing this outside of the school day. But this is because our, our, honestly, the, the principal aides who are working with some of our students in the less structured time actually have the least amount of training for something like this. So we do have a great, a great deal of training for our teachers and for our teaching assistants who are in the classroom. So the, the goal here is to find some additional funds so that we can pay the principal aides additional hours so that they could participate in the training, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jody?
Yep.
Okay, so the next one is the, oops. Sorry, the next one is Steve Cronin. And this one is for the Blanchard Middle School Wastewater Treatment Plant. And they, the depot well is currently not online. They're requesting $30,000 for a design in order to have a bid project in time for the June town meeting. And they will be seeking the remaining $270,000 from capital. So they need to get moving and they don't have the funding. And Steve, I think, is out there if you need him.
That's pretty clear, so go ahead.
The next one is the Health Department, and they're looking for $37,050 for contract tracers. They're requesting four additional contract tracers to help with contact tracing. And they were being funded by CARES Act, which has expired or will be expiring or did expire recently. Okay, all right. The next one is also, also for the Health Department. They're requesting additional hours for the public health nurse. That's $9,000 to get through the rest of the year. And that was being funded by CARES Act, which has stopped or is stopping. They're also asking for that for the next two years, '23 and '24. Then we have a request from Jennifer Claro for rental mortgage and utility assistance. She's asking for $70,000 to assist residents who've exhausted other local funding due to financial hardship and are still having difficulties meeting their basic expenses. Jennifer also has put in requests for internet access. She's got a price of $65,000 and she's trying to provide Wi-Fi internet service to four of our low-income housing.
Jody, before, oh, go ahead, Tom, and then I'll ask my question because you might be answering it, so go ahead.
I was just, I think Jen Claro's out there. I was just interested in where the $70,000 number came from. That's, it's a great cause and I definitely would be very supportive, but just wondering if that represents the entirety of the need or if that's just a start or?
And, and the other question that I have, I'm just to throw this in is, and maybe we didn't, I just can't remember, did we get a response to the letter we wrote to Comcast concerning this?
Yes, we did.
And I assume that the response was not positive since you're asking for this funding?
That's correct.
Okay.
So to, to answer Mr. Clay's comment, the, the figure that we came up with, it's, it's, it's a speculative figure. I'm just gonna be honest, you know, the buildings are older and they were not set up for Wi-Fi connectivity. So it's kind of hard to give a hard number. You know, I've also reached out to David Hettison, who, they just actually went out for bids for a newer development where they were gonna be providing Wi-Fi accessibility for that income-based property. So he has connected me with, it's called Intelabine. And just to kind of get an estimate of what they would charge to be able to make the buildings Wi-Fi accessible. I do think there are funds that are out there that we could access. I know Robert Rafferty, who is a member of the Community Advisory Committee, had written a letter to Senator Kennedy on behalf of this particular issue. And there are some funds that are coming down for, to, for the expansion of broadband services that we could possibly access. And I know I've been working also with, you know, Patty Mason, who's a community member. And there's possibly some local foundation funds that could possibly also help us with this initiative.
Thanks, Jen. My, my question was actually around the rental assistance number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you, oh, the rental assistance, yeah. So basically, we base that off of the, the funding that we have provided for so far in 2021, which was right around $34,000. In fiscal year '22, we're already at $11,000. And then again, we looked at other referral agencies that we had clients reach out to for assistance. And then we also based it off of the funding that we had received from the Cummings Foundation for Emergency Hardship Situations. And of course, those funds were strictly for older adults. So this, these funds would be for older adults as well as for young families.
Thank you.
Anita?
And related to that question, Jennifer, so for the, so I was just curious how you're currently funding this aid for families? And is it, so it sounds like Cummings is part of the funding stream into this. What, what's pink and what other?
Sorry, so Cummings was, it's, it's not anymore. We don't have, I mean, yeah, unfortunately, that's not an option. A lot of the funds have really come from the generosity of the, of the community, our COA. And also is in partnership with the, with the Westford Academy Schools, we were able to create a emergency, a COVID emergency relief assistance fund. And a lot of these funds were generated through that effort, through that collaboration. And then, of course, we've got some other grants. We had received a grant through the Greater Lowell Community Foundation. We've also received some grants through Elder Services of Mayor MacValley, as well as we also had a emergency, a COA emergency relief effort, which was just targeted for older adults. So it's basically, the funding has been community-driven. How long that will last, how much people can continue to give is, you know, is the unknown. So this is one of the reasons that we were asking for these funds, just to know that we have the necessary funding in hand to be able to help in these continued crisis situations.
Thank you.
And, and if I can just add, this $70,000.
One more thing, because we have a lot to go through.
Yeah, sorry. So the, yeah, the funding that we had asked for, the $70,000 would be for the whole, the whole three-year period.
Oh, okay, thank you for that, Claire.
Sure. Okay, and so the last of the immediate needs is also Jennifer. And she's, she's asking to assist with mental health co-payments and/or pay for sessions if health insurance will not cover for people, residents who are having financial hardship. She's asking for $3,000 for that purpose.
And I guess, Jennifer, two questions. One, have, have you been hearing about folks who've not been able to afford co-payments for mental health services? And I guess, again, sort of the same question that Tom asked with respect to the rental mortgage and utility assistance, how you came up with the figure of $3,000?
I worked with our town social worker and our, our COA outreach worker. They're the ones that advised, that had advised me of this problem, that, you know, some of their clients have either exhausted their mental health visits and so therefore had no other funding to be able to access mental health counseling. And then there's many, many, especially older adults where their health insurance does not provide that co-payment. So this is something that we have never assisted with. This is just a starting number.
Okay, thank you.
So then, from there, we go into the rest of the Phase One requests that you have gotten that meant that it was COVID-related. So I don't know whether you want to go through those at this point or, or not, but.
Why don't we quickly just run through those, okay, Jody? I just want to make sure that the public is aware of the requests that we've gotten.
Okay, so the next in your Phase One would be, you had a request from Paul Fox for $5,000 for personal protective equipment. Turn my page over here. So then you had a request from Paul Fox for $5,000 for additional cleaning and disinfecting of town buildings and schools. Another request from him for $12,500 for air filter replacement for the filters we bought during COVID. Then the Fire Department is putting in a request for $834,000, which is to keep his staff currently at the levels that we have been staffing, which is full shifts during COVID. He has applied for a safer grant again to hire three more firefighters, but we will not know till late spring on that. He's also put in a request for $300,000 for Fire Department overtime related to handling the COVID crisis. And he put that in for the next two years too, so three years in a row. The schools, Chris Chu put in a request for $50,000 for fifth hour of elementary math interventionist. And Chris Chu also put in for a Lexia subscription, which is an adaptive reading program for $60,000. And Chris put in a request for $18,000 for a Panorama subscription, which is a platform they've been using to improve social emotional learning in our district. Ray Dick from the Health Department put in a request for.
Sorry. Sorry.
You were on a roll.
I'm on a roll.
I'm sorry, Anita, she was on a roll, go ahead.
I had a question again for Chris Chu about the Panorama survey. And the question about sharing with T S S T F, that was also mine. Because I was just curious, I know Panorama deals with like the social emotional wellness, right? Unless I'm wrong. And I was like, oh, that's information that I know that T S S T F also looks at. Is it possible to share that information with T S S T F?
Yes, we can. We could, we could share the aggregate data. We actually have some of the, the surveys that we used last year. We've actually shared with the D E I Committee as well, too, because it was applicable to the survey that they had sent out. And so in the same way, the Panorama allows us to, to survey different, different topics, right? And so it's been, it's been very useful for us. And we'd like to be able to continue to use it for another year because it's been helpful as we've been transitioning back full-time to, to assess really student needs on an aggregate level for the most part. But it also helps us to figure out if we need to provide some additional support for individual students as well, too. But yes, that is something we could share the aggregate information with, with the, with T S S T F.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I think I had said $10,000 for the Health Department for COVID testing. Had I said that? I can't remember, but go ahead. They're looking for rapid test kits for employees. She is also for the Health Department, looking for an undetermined amount right now, but for vaccine clinics for COVID vaccines. And the Health Department's looking for $10,000 for masks, Band-Aids, pads, needles, things, clinical, clinical medical supplies for COVID. And then they're looking for $211,000 for the Health Department. That would be a part-time position for substance abuse, tobacco control, compliance agent, social media website manager part-time, and a one-time emergency supplies. And she did provide a breakdown.
Anita, whoop, whoop, stop, Anita.
I do have questions for Ray, if she's out there, or someone else from the Health Department or Board of Health.
Ray is out there.
Oh, okay. Can we promote Ray? Mike, maybe I'll wait for her to. Mike, maybe I'll wait for her to-
I think she's, I think she's on Anita's-
Okay, yeah, I'll ask my question. I was just curious about the vaccine clinics. I assume that they booked really, really quickly. And if you had a, if, could you tell me like, how many people you were able to serve most with, like, you know, one vaccine clinic and how quickly it filled up?
Sure. Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, good evening. Yes, for our clinics, we are filling immediately, within 24 hours. So for instance, our most recent clinic was for children under 12. And that clinic filled within 24 hours. That was for 300.
Okay. And then, are you currently planning for another vaccine clinic? Or would this determine whether or not you're able to hold more clinics?
Sure. So tomorrow, we actually have another clinic for children. And then, once that clinic is finished, we're finished with flu, we're finished with children at the time, now we're going to switch to booster clinics. We have a lot of requests for boosters.
Okay. I have another question for-
Go ahead.
Okay. And mine's related to the, the different positions that, that includes the substance abuse coordinator position. So that was actually folded in, I know that like, for TSTF, when Jeff Stevens was on there, too, like this was going to be a shared position, the community wellness coordinator, that was going to be half like mental wellness and, and mental health and wellness and substance abuse prevention. So I wasn't sure if this was going to be like duplicative of what was happening with that particular position, or if you had a vision of how they would work together.
Sure. So for our department, we have a vision of the both positions working together. There's several grants that our department sits on for substance abuse. And we need some help with managing those, those grants. As well as, we have mandates for tobacco control inspections. The former substance abuse part-time physician used to conduct those inspections. And our department has, has done our very best to absorb those inspections. So that is the focus for this, this particular part-time position would be community health programming for both vaping, tobacco, alcohol, and substance abuse.
Okay. So maybe, Tom, I don't know if, Tommy, can you clarify? Because you were just on the TSTF group longer than me. But whether or not any of those responsibilities were going to be covered by the community wellness coordinator? And I do also have a question about the social media position. And is that position also going to be, are they writing that content as well, or just posting?
So they would be posting both on our social media platforms, updating our website. As you can, can imagine, with COVID, the science is continually changing, as well as several other mandates. Subject matter being, for instance, our food inspectional program continues to change each year with all the grants. So that would be the focus for this position would be updates and maintaining marketing for us, all our social media and PSAs, public service announcements, things of that nature.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
Tom, I see you have your hand up.
Yep. And hi, Ray. And I know that you do have a, hi, I know you do have a breakdown, so I can look at that. I guess I was thinking, I guess sort of in response to Anita's question, I think most of the towns that we looked at, that had a community wellness position, also had a part-time substance abuse coordinator position. So I think, in general, the vision was that, in some, you know, good future for Westford, we probably would have both those things working closely together. I guess I'm a little bit less, that was a good question Anita just asked, but I'm sort of familiar with what that position would do, except then, because we've talked about before and we've been thinking about it. I don't know. I guess what I'm wondering is if you would be, if, kind of conceptually, you could imagine breaking these, that request into a couple of different pieces, like alongside their breakdown? Because I think some of them, we may want to learn a little bit more about to understand, but some of them we may feel confident or comfortable moving more quickly. Do you see those as necessarily being a bundle, or could those be approved in pieces?
I certainly think they could be approved in pieces. Absolutely. And we're happy to break it down even further. Whatever the requests certainly are of the Board, we're happy to accommodate and separate it out if that's the request.
Thanks.
Sure.
One thing that I probably should mention that Dan reminded me is, we did put a column of requests that are also FEMA-eligible. And some of the fire wages may be FEMA-eligible. And the COVID testing vaccine clinic, and also the medical supplies are FEMA-eligible, too. So we should be applying for those funds, too, if, you know, those are available. Most of the other requests that we've gone through are not FEMA-eligible. So just something to keep in mind. Okay, so then, let's see, where was I? I think that's the last for the health right now. I have Jennifer Claro, who has put in a request. Though I know TSTF also had asked, which is for Interface, which is the referral, the mental health referral service. And she put it in for every year. I know the schools have also put in to fund that, too. So, but she did put in a request. The amounts changed from $34,000 to $44,000 to $25,000 to $25,000. And I think that is a changing number. And we don't want to apply for funds that are in, in excess of what we need. So that's, the next four requests are that. And then Jennifer also put in a request for a mobile technician, which would be a mobile clinician who would, I guess, be traveling around and providing resources to people in need. And she asked for $45,000 for that. The library-
Stop. I, just a comment and, and a question. I don't know that we need to answer this tonight. But I'm wondering, as we think about the wellness position and what that coordinator is going to entail, if, if it is a clinician, if part of the responsibilities can, of a mobile clinician can be folded into that position or worked into that position together? And so that our wellness coordinator perhaps could also, on this, you know, emergency basis, also be able to provide some clinical services as well? So I just think, I think it's something to think about and something to think about in terms of when we just, you know, we're looking at the wellness coordinator, what the, what the qualifications are that we're looking for, for such a position. So just something to think about as we move forward. Anita?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate Jennifer's out-of-the-box thinking. I think she has really great ideas here. I know that a mobile van is used for other methods, like for a, for vaccine access in other states. So it's interesting to see it here, applied in this way. But I wonder if there's also, if this is something to potentially consider doing a partnership with, with like a hospital, right? Or some other like healthcare provider, or health system. So I'm sorry.
I, I think that, you know, I, I think it bears exploration about how, you know, if we decide that this is something we want to do, how we do it and how we incorporate it into the town. And whether or not it's a separate position, or as you, either hospital-based or as I said, incorporated into the wellness coordinator position. But certainly agree that, yeah, it's something we should definitely look into.
Okay, so, let's see. So now we're at the library, and Ellen Rainville is asking for $3,200 to provide three staging setups. They're borrowing theirs from Westford Academy that is COVID-related. And then we have a resident, Claire Redman, has asked for an undetermined amount to do an HVAC audit for all of our town and school buildings. And I know-
We've done, Jody, haven't we done some of that already?
Yes, Paul Fox did do an HVAC and air quality audit in June, July of 2020, after COVID hit. And he did install individual HEPA air filters in all town buildings and schools. In his opinion, the majority of requests has been done. And our contractors have stated that we are providing adequate airflow in our buildings.
Okay.
And then Claire Redman resident also requested an undetermined amount to provide test kits to all households, two boxes of rapid test kits, free of charge, to all households. So I know Ray Dick was talking about this. We did not get the grant that the state came up with. But, you know, I believe she also is considering something in this topic, so. So those are all the requests that are a Phase One, related to COVID or immediate request. And then we go to Phase Two, which is non-COVID-related requests. And I don't know if you want to cover those at this point?
Yeah, just run through them quickly, please.
Okay. All right. So the, there was a request-
Anita has a question.
Yeah. I just, to just kind of catch the end of what Jody was saying, that Ray, you might be doing something around test kits or a testing center yourself, is, or for the Health Department. Is that something you could share with really quickly?
Sure, absolutely. So I had mentioned today to Jody that the Board of Health met last night. And that was a request to look into, see if there was any available funding or upper funding to provide test kits for the residents of the community. I do have a couple of logistics concerns, just, you know, as far as where would we store them? How would we transport them? Where could people pick them up? That kind of thing? So those are some of the things we're just trying to work out before we, and how many do we want to order? Do we want one for every household? Or a one, a one-time order kind of thing? Those are some of the logistics we're looking into right now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so the first request, non-COVID Phase Two, would be a request to fund a portion of the fire training tower, which we're planning to build related to 35 Town Farm. Another one would be to fund some portion of 12 North Main exterior cleanup. And that's $294,000. I don't know if I mentioned the $270,000, $37,000 for the fire training facility. Also, the demolition or and/or preservation of 12 North Main, $1.5 million. Protection of water utility network assets would be $35,000 for technology. Replenish East Boston Camps revolving fund, which plummeted with COVID, $40,000. No rental income during 2020. Stony Brook Conservation Area, drinking water, transmission and distribution, $20,000. Reinstating $10,000 to the contracted services line item of the land management budget, $10,000. $1 million to fund the HVAC of the Cameron Senior Center. The HVAC, I know Paul Fox is working on that new energy services contract, which may affect that. The Blanchard roof replacement, $3 million, which we believe would be the town's portion if we get MSBA funds. The CMMS tracking system, which is something that the facilities department feels they need to track the orders that come in for things that need to be fixed. He's working on that. We did just get a $10,000 grant from MIA to help with that. It is on the capital. Public safety radio upgrade, and I guess I should say, all these projects are on the capital plan, too, which has not been voted yet. But, so the public safety radio upgrade is $1,039,000. And the feasibility study for the schools to determine where they might be able to locate their admin and redistrict, possible redistricting, that's $250,000. Construction funding for a plain road sidewalk extension, that's $670,000. Design and construction for a Phase Two, which is probably really Phase Three plane road, which would go all the way down to East Boston Camps, sidewalk, $70,000. And field maintenance revolving, $40,000. That's lost revenue for facilities that were closed in the recreation department. Employee hazard pay, we had two unions ask about that, no amount. The Westford Public Works Association and the Public Safety Dispatchers. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So going back to the, the high priority lists, there seem to be at least a couple that, I don't know if the Board wants to talk about or not in terms of funding. One of them was the elevator at Abbott that Scott raised and that the Disability Commission is, voted its support for. And I guess, the other one that I would raise would be for the contact tracing in the schools, since the funding for that is going to run out at the end of the year. And it would seem to me that that is something we want to continue for the rest of, at least through, through the rest of the school year, you know, for immediate need. And then I don't know if there's anything else that any of the other board members want to consider as well. So, Tom?
I just wanted to ask, Jody, I think there were a few other items, in addition to the ones you mentioned, Andrea, that are, that were paid for by CARES funding, that basically the request is just to continue doing something that's working already. So I would, if there are any in addition to the ones you mentioned, Andrea, I would support going ahead and voting on, it's a continuation of services that, that are timing out of, in terms of funding out of CARES.
Okay. Maybe Jody can go back and give us that answer. And meanwhile, while she's looking for that answer, Christina?
Hi, thanks. I just had a question on the contact tracers. So the schools asked for one, and I understand what that person's going to do. But then I thought I heard that the Health Department hired four. So I'm just wondering, is there any overlap there? Do we need five? If somebody can just kind of explain that, how that, how that would all work?
Sure. Let me, let me try, and I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that the one being proposed for the schools is a continuation of the person who's there now and who's, who is solely focused on the school system itself. I believe, and Ray can correct me if I'm wrong, that the four that are being requested by the Health Department are, are to perform contact tracing for members of the community and throughout the community, as opposed to the schools, and separate and apart from the school system. So if I am wrong about that, somebody needs to correct me. Chris Chu has his hand up, so perhaps, and then Ray, I see, is here. So perhaps either one or both of them can add to that.
I was just going to say, I think, I think you did do a nice job separating the, the two needs. There has been some overlap as we've gone through the pandemic. Because when we first started back in March of 2020, the school nurses, I think, had slowly started helping out. And there was some volunteering that was going on. And then there were some other opportunities for people to be trained to deal with certain aspects of the program that Ray can speak to. What we have found, though, is that the school just has a separate need, specifically with our test and stay program being the main component. So that is the big difference. And then what Ray can speak to more, more articulately is just the overwhelming need for the, the contact tracing that goes beyond the, the student- the, the student population and throughout the wider community as well, too.
Okay, thank you. Ray?
Yes, thank you very much. The State Department of Public Health had a collaborative for contact tracing, in which case we were able to utilize over that last two years.
Oops, oops, did we just lose her?
I'm here, sorry, I don't know what happened. Apologize. So the CTC, which was the contact tracing collaborative with the Department of Public Health, has recently closed down, which leaves us in a position where our student nurses are overwhelmed right now with cases, our public health nurse is overwhelmed with cases and contact tracing, as well as running clinics. And the CARES Act does expire at the end of the month. And so we are looking to take on three part-time contact tracers to help us with nights and weekends. And the school is separate. Thank you to Dr. Chu.
Thank you. And just one clarification on the funding for the contact tracers. You don't have any funding after December 31st, correct, Ray?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anita?
I guess I would agree with Tom for anything in terms of, you know, continuation of services, for anything that CARE, CARES Act funding would end, which I guess as well, public health and contact tracers, the public health nurse, is there anything else on that list?
Are you ready to hear from me? Scott has his hand up. Do you want him to?
I, I guess before I, with Scott's indulgence, before I go to him, if you can just tell us which ones are, are requests that would be extensions of CARES Act funding.
Okay, so I think that number six, which is the, you know, one full time for the contact tracing in the schools. Number nine, which would be the contract tracers for the health department, 37,050, and number 10, the additional hours for the public health nurse. Those, unless I missed something, to appear to be the ones that CARES funding will be drying up on. But I also want to just bring up that Mike Wells is here, and he didn't realize that item 41 was dropped down to non-COVID related. And I think he would like to speak to that before you make up your minds about the protection of water utility network, so.
Okay, before I get to Mike, let me, let me get to Scott.
I guess, I guess two questions. One is to Jody. So, I mean, what about the line item for funding, you know, night meetings for the technology department? Would that be, that's not really part of CARES, but we'd want that in considerably January, correct?
Yes, but my, the question that was asked of me is what is being funded by CARES that's drying up? And that's what I answered. But sure, the other things we want to, but that was what I was answering that question.
Thanks. Other questions for Ray. So I, I get, when, when you first had a pandemic, with no cure or no vaccine, contact tracing, because to get to this disease was, you know, serious. We've now got an endemic, not a pandemic. We've got the town 95% vaccinated, plus over 95% vaccinated. And I guess I'm kind of curious what contact tracing tells us, it tells us anymore, because it's basically a disease that's every place that you can get, any place. I'm, I'm just kind of curious what despises.
Ray, want to speak to that?
Sure, absolutely. So I will say that the Department of Public Health is rolling back on some sections of contact tracing. Just this week, actually. However, we are still mandated. It's a mandated requirement of Boards of Health here in Massachusetts that we follow up on all communicable disease, in which case the CDC and the Mass Department of Public Health is still requiring that we contact trace positive COVID cases. So as long, until they determine it to be an endemic instead of a pandemic, we are required to still follow up on contact tracing. Their focus as of this week is children K through 12 and folks that have amino compromise systems, as well as the elderly. So we do have a mandate requirement to continue to contact trace. I don't know if that answers your question.
That's good enough. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anita?
I would also support a few other things on this list to add for consideration, such as that part-time help to support the virtual meetings, which is number four. Number seven, the de-escalation training for the elementary principal aides. And the mutual, like the, the $70,000 that Jennifer Claro was saying is usually funded through community generosity. The rental, number 13, rental mortgage and utility assistance.
Okay. Tom, and then I'm going to go to Mike Wells, who wants to speak, okay?
Yeah, Andy, I was just looking at the list, and I know there's a lot of careful thought into the list that's marked in green, all those items. Unless, I almost wonder if we might think about it the other way. Some of them, I think all of them are well justified. Some of them, people may feel like they've got more questions or need more time, and that certainly can make sense. But I guess I would be inclined to move forward with as many of them as the board feels comfortable with, especially something like rental assistance, just like Anita was saying, because that could be an urgent need that could hit someone between now and our next meeting.
Okay. Let's hold that thought. We'll get back to that in a minute, Tom. I, I do want to give Mike a chance, an opportunity to speak, because he's been waiting patiently.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to explain the presence of that item about the utility network protection. And I, this may be my fault for not paying enough attention to this process, because when I submitted it, I kind of thought it was a drive heading down the middle of the fairway and was, you know, didn't need me to shepherd it, because this was one of the things that in the aftermath of the Colonial Pipeline attack, Homeland Security came out and said to us, you should harden your utility networks, and you should harden your utility infrastructure. So then at about the same time, this ARPA proposal came out, and one of the categories is protection of utilities. So I thought this is an absolute slam dunk, put it in there. And I'm a little concerned that it seems to have slipped down into the sort of, the end of the list of things it would be nice to have as well, if we have any money left over. And to be honest, if we can't get it funded this way, then I think I'm going to have to go to Capitol and either add it or take part of the money that's in my current network appropriation and divert it to do this, because this is a priority that we should take care of.
Somebody remind me, or all of us, what Mike, Mike, what's, what's the request? How much?
Oh, I'm not sure. It's 35.
It's 35,000 and, yeah, I mean, it certainly could be that we didn't recognize that, Mike, and if you didn't look at what we sent out, the final, then yeah, we probably missed that. So I apologize for that, and that's why we're going through it all together, so.
Okay. Eric or Jody, can somebody put up the list again of the, the priorities that are in green? Because I can't remember them all in my head. And, and Ray, do you still have a comment or a question, or have you just forgotten to take your hand down?
I apologize. Yes, I'm, I'm all set. I'll load that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so these are the green, and they go all the way to 15, if we want to add Mike on as 16.
So, so Scott? You're muted.
Sorry, that'd be the quote of the decade.
I know.
I, I guess, you know, I'm not very in favor of funding years two and three, anything tonight, so if it's year one, that's one thing, but you know, things that we just don't know really where they're going to be a year from now, it seems odd to be allocating resources that we don't know if they're going to need or not, so. With everything green, I, I can't, there's no green on my screen, I'm not seeing anything. It's all white. So, but if years two or three, if these things are in green, I'd be inclined not to do that tonight.
I, I have to say that I would agree with you, Scott, you know, for a couple of reasons. One, we don't know where things are going to be in year two or year three. Secondly, we also, you know, the state, you know, yesterday Governor Baker just signed a bill, you know, a $4 billion bill that is going to be distributing additional funds to the community, to communities. You know, I, I have no idea what Westford is going to get, and how much funding we're going to get, and how and if we can, we'll be able to use that funding. But I think that needs to play into our consideration as well, so. I, I, I am with you in that, in that, before we fund years two and three, I would like more information and more data. Christina?
I'd just like to add to that, not only the years two and three, which I agree with, but it may only be the Community Wellness Coordinator, that's a staff position in this list. I can't quite see the whole list, but I, I'd be a little hesitant on hiring somebody with one-time funds until we looked into it a little bit more carefully.
And I'd also, honestly, I, I, I want to take a look at that position, make sure that we really have a good job description, that we know what the, you know, what the market basket salary is going to be, you know, before we fund it for three years. So while I agree that it's a priority, I don't want anybody to think I don't think it's a priority, and it's not something that, that this town needs. But for me, I need a little bit more information before I can vote on it tonight. And I think taking a little bit of extra time just to fill in all the details will just give us more information to make a better decision. Anita?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with what Christina brought up, because I, I know that we do want to be careful about any staff positions and using these one-time funds for that. But then the same would go for the Sustainability Coordinator position too, that I know is farther down, or like the new ad. Yeah, so that's all I wanted to share.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so can I just mention, I did not read that sustainability, because I'm working off a sheet from yesterday. So yes, I mentioned that earlier, but that, I didn't read it, so I apologize for that.
So if we go through, Scott, do you still have?
Just, just to add to that, I think to the comments, in general, I think adding staff positions should be done in the context of the overall budget, and you know, how we pay for them in year one versus years two and beyond. So, like you, Andrew, I'm not saying no to mental health or sustainability, just saying, I'm not sure I want to do that with one-time funds, especially tonight, without job description, so forth.
Tom?
So I'm happy to, to work with Jody to provide the job description and help flesh out the market basket, and, and really anything else that people would like to see between now and the next meeting. So happy to do that. And the only point I would make about, I would obviously prefer to go through the normal budgeting process as well for something like a staff position. For me, it's just a question of what urgency do we have here, and what does the timing and the resource allow for? And, and something like this could be a permitted use under, under what the ARPA funding is for, so. I guess I just, if, if it was something that was kind of a convenient, nice to have, that didn't feel immediately relevant to what people are going through in Westford, then I would say yes, the appropriate course is to, is to use the normal process. But I think in this case, there's a, there's a, such a high level of urgency that I'd at least propose that the committee think about. And it sounds like the direction we're taking is, we can talk about it again next time with a little bit more information.
Jody? Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, there are other positions here, so the school nurse contact tracer is a position, that is an employee. And the four contract tracers for the health department are employees. So I just want to make sure we're understanding that there really isn't a difference between those employees and this employee, so.
But they're, they're under contract now, being paid for with CARES money. So we're talking about a continuation of a current position, not another addition.
Okay, well, I'm not positive that that's completely accurate, but anyway, I just wanted to mention, these are also employees of the town, so.
Okay, Chris Chu?
Yeah, I just want to say that the district coordinator was hired knowing that it was a one-year position, and that we're specifically using one-time funds for this one year. So it's not a long-term contracted position. It is actually only for this one year.
Great. Anita?
I have a question for Ray then, for the contact tracers, and would the same apply to the four additional ones that you're hiring, or you would like to hire? Is that based on contracts?
Yes, so those would be temporary employees, and so it would be part-time.
Wait a minute, that's not the question, Ray. I think the question is, how many of your contract traces right now are being funded by CARES Act?
The only one right now is Yale.
Okay.
A public health nurse.
Okay, and so the ones that you're asking to be hired, right now, it, it's separate funding. It would be under ARPA funding or FEMA if it's reimbursable, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Anyway, that clarifies it for me. I don't know about for you, Anita. Okay. All right, let's, can you, in the, in the interest of moving this discussion along, let's talk about what we, what we're prepared to fund tonight. So if you can go to the top, thank you, Eric. I think we've all, I think we've come to a consensus with respect to the Community Wellness Coordinator, that we want to defer that until we get further information. The next one, part-time help to host virtual meetings for the boards and committees. I think there's a sense we, we definitely want that to continue. The Abbott Elementary School Stage Accessibility. The contract, the full-time district-wide contract nursing and floating, not contract, nursing contact tracing for the schools. De-escalation training for the elementary principal aides. The Blanchard Middle School wastewater treatment plant tank rehabilitation. Then contract traces being asked for by the health department. And then additional hours for the public health nurse. Again, I see that it's been asked for, for three years, but I think we have determined that we only want to fund one year at this point. And then we have rental mortgage and utility assistance. The Internet Access Program. And assists with mental health co-payments. And then Mike Wells' request for, I'm not sure how you phrase it, but hardening our utility lines to, okay? I think those are the ones that are under, under discussion for tonight. Tom Laflamme, I see you have your hand up.
It's in control, sorry about that. So my one concern about the Internet Access Program is, again, I, I think that that's going to have a long-term budgetary impact, because it's not just install Wi-Fi, you then have to maintain it. Someone has to manage it, you know, so I, I do wonder what the long-term budget and recurring budget impacts that program would have. You know, I definitely see a benefit to it. But, yeah, the, the management of it and maintenance do concern me from the financial standpoint.
So maybe then what we do is, if the board is agreeable, is we hold that one too, until we get a little bit more information about exactly what the costs are going to be and the, and the long-term impact. And then the other thing, as a participant just pointed out to me, I think the rental mortgage and utility assistance that Jennifer put in. that Jennifer put in for was for three years, as I recall. And it was $70,000 for three years. So do we want to basically divide by three and only fund for a year? And then see where we are? Does that make sense to folks? Yes, no, nod your heads, do something.
I mean, it sounds fine to me. The only question I guess I'd have is.
Okay.
I mean, I guess that's a question for Jennifer. Do we believe that, you know, things now are as bad as they're going to get and it will get better? So we want to front-load it instead of, you know, one-third is a one-half this year and then, you know, 25/25? But yeah, I agree, it should be probably rationed out somehow. Rationed out somehow.
Yes, so that's, yeah, we actually, when we were putting that together, we did kind of do it on a sliding scale. And, you know, we're fine with, you know, maybe looking at 30,000 and then just see how far it takes us. Maybe it takes us into two years. That's fine. But yeah.
Okay. So we could fund that for 30. Tom, do you still have your hand up or do you have another comment? Okay, just checking. And Tom Clay has his hand up.
I'm wondering, Adam, Chair, if you want me to take a pass at a motion?
I think so. I swear I was going with this. So if you can try, although Jody just put her hand up, so hang on a minute.
Well, I'm just wondering if you'd like to know what these.
What the total cost is?
Yeah, before you vote it, I'd have Dan Love to do math and he is totaling it right now.
Yeah, let's wait for the total, the total cost.
So if Dan is correct, and he usually is, it's 312,550.
And so just Dan, so I'll give you something else to do. Add that to what we have already expended. And can you tell us what the total that we've expended? If we spend 312,550 tonight, what will our total be?
I might be able to beat him. No, go on, Dan.
So we started with 3,709,000, give or take, and we appropriated 556,000 to date. Our balance right now is 3,152,000 with all those items that you just listed with the adjustments paid that totals 312,550, which leaves us with the current balance of 2,527,177.
And we will have spent, I have 869,258. Is that right? Dan?
869,258. Right on, Jody.
Thank you.
All right, okay. I think it's important that everybody have those numbers. All right, with that, Tom, would you like to try?
I'm going to give it a shot. So I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to recommend that we approve and proceed with the following items. And I'm going to be referring to them by the number on the far-left column. So I believe we're going to do number four, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10, and we're going to skip to number 13.
For 30,000.
For 30,000, yes. Yeah, for the amount 30,000 modified from what's here, thank you. 14.
No, I think we're holding 14 till we get more information about the cost.
Thank you, you're exactly right.
And the long-term.
So the next one, so the next one would be 15. And then I think we also added number 41, if the number's correct.
That sounds right to me.
Sounds right to me. Dan?
I apologize, I had the Internet Access Program still in there, so I'd like to modify the total quickly.
Okay.
The new expenditures are 247,550.
Okay.
For a total spent of?
For a total spent of 804,258.
Thank you.
I will second Tom's motion.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Wait a minute, there's just one thing.
Good job.
All right, I don't see any further comments or questions. So all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. All right, thank you all very much. I know it's been a long discussion, but I think it's been a very fruitful and productive discussion and I appreciate everybody's comments. This certainly will not be the last discussion that we have about funding, but I think we've got a good start and we're certainly keeping in place services that we have provided during the course of the pandemic as well as enhancing services on behalf of our community. So thank you all. Jody?
Yes, so we will update the sheet and your action. And this will be available on the Select Board webpage tomorrow. We'll put a link so people can kind of follow along. And then the items you asked for us to follow up on, would you like that on the January 11th agenda?
Yes, please, assuming that we can get the information that we need by then, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. All right, we are at our 8 o'clock item, which is the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. I know at the last Select Board meeting, it was decided to move Town Meeting to a later date because of the pandemic slash endemic. And so we reached out to the schools and Saturday, and we've also spoken with our town moderator. And so we have determined that Saturday, June 11th, 2022, at 9:00 AM, with a rain date of Sunday, June 12th, 2022, at 9:00 AM, to set for the date of Town Meeting. So any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to set the dates for Annual Town Meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. All right, we have a date and a rain date. Hopefully, we won't need the rain dates. All right, next is to consider approval of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Timeline, including the fiscal year 2023 budget hearings. Any questions or comments about the timeline? Anita?
Yeah, actually, I had a question about the Annual Town Meeting date. And I was just wondering if, since I know Chris, she was still on the line, if there's going to be any sort of update to the school calendar, can you add that Annual Town Meeting date to the next update? If there is one?
If he's not still on the line?
I am still here, but I, could you just repeat the question? I'm not sure I understood what you're asking.
Yeah, so I know that sometimes every once in a while, the school calendar is updated. If that happens, could you add the Annual Town Meeting date to that?
Sure, yeah. And we can also just help to publicize it in the similar way that we did with the October Special Town Meeting as well too, as we approach it.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, the, Madam Moderator, the food trucks were a huge success, so I certainly hope that you're going to do those again in June.
Well, try.
Okay. Okay, getting back to approval of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Timeline, including fiscal year 2023 budget hearings, any comments or questions about the timeline and the hearings? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And Jody, we'll get that posted tomorrow as well. Great, thank you. All right, our 8:15 PM item, we have a request from the Pedestrian Safety Committee to opt-in and support General Law Chapter 90, Section 17C and 18B, the establishment of 25 miles per hour speed limit in thickly settled or business district in Westford and the development of special speed zones. Chris Barrett, who's Chair of the Pedestrian Safety Committee. Hello, how are you? Go ahead, it's all you.
Great, I'm doing well, thanks. Thanks for the introduction. There is a presentation that should be displayed, is that possible? Yeah, awesome, great. So as you heard from Andrea, we're here to talk about some new legislation that came out. Well, it's not new, legislation that came out in 2016 that allows towns and municipalities to set different speed limits in their communities. On this opening slide, I ask you that you just note those two signs because for 17C, the sign on the right is typically what would be used. And then for 18B, the sign on the left is what we would use for the special speed zones. So just keep those in mind as we work through the presentation. If we could go to the next slide, please? So as I've just mentioned, in 2016, the Mass Municipal Modernization Act set forth two sections in Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 17C, which allows communities to change the statutory speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour in all city or town-owned roadways within a thickly settled or business district. And Section 18B allows municipalities to establish the regulatory 20 mile an hour safety zones. Now, there's two, I think, key words in this slide, and that's the statutory and regulatory. So as we progress through this presentation, there's going to hopefully be a little bit of an education on how speed limits are determined in Massachusetts. What's the difference between a statutory limit and a regulatory limit? How a regulatory limit is set? And so that's what we're going to go into next. And then we're going to talk a little bit more back around what 17C and 18B actually allow us to do. So if we could go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So 17C is changing the statutory speed limit. I'm not going to read this whole slide, but basically, these are statutory speed limits, I like to think of, are the speed limits that you should be, you know, as a motorist, following in the absence of any posted speed limit. So generally speaking, you know, we're probably familiar with the 20 mile an hour in a school zone. And there's some other designations on this slide about how, what other speeds we should be following on our roadways. A statutory speed limit does not require an engineering study, unlike a regulatory speed limit. If we go on to the next slide, please? So the regulatory speed limit is one in which a community wants to change a speed limit for whatever reason. Mass Highway requires an engineering study is undertaken to do that. And an engineering study goes through a variety of different aspects to come up with a recommendation. And then that gets either approved or not by Mass Highway. The engineering study can be quite comprehensive, but we can go on to the next slide. So a study will comprise of these different types of investigations. So looking at the study, preliminary study of conditions on the roadway, speed calculations, crash data. One of the things that is, I think, of interest to note is, at the end of the day, you may not actually be able to set the speed limit at maybe the desired limit that you want. So I think we've all heard Paul say this in various public meetings. Basically, when a speed limit is set, it's usually determined by the 85th percentile of the recorded traveled speeds. So there are circumstances in which you may want to lower a speed on a roadway but end up having to actually raise it because of that scenario, which is, I thought, very interesting. So in general, statutory speed limits, that is sort of the blanket speed limit that you would see in a community in the absence of a regulatory speed limit. And a regulatory speed limit requires an engineering study in order to potentially get that set and approval from Mass Highway. So those are the sort of takeaways I want people to remember from those first three slides. If we could go on to the next slide, please? Now, drawing back to Section 17C, in the definition, it talks about thickly settled and business district. I think business districts are fairly well identified to the motorist or the resident. But thickly settled is a little bit more opaque. So this is the definition of what business thickly settled means. I think in most cases, people can recognize a thickly settled street versus maybe one that's not quite as thickly settled. But it would still be, I think, advantageous if there was the ability to identify those areas or those roads that had that, met that designation for the motorist. But I wanted to call out, this is the definition, so that people are aware of how that is determined. Next slide, please? So Section 18B of Chapter 90 allows us to set special speed zones. Now, since this is a regulatory change, this requires an engineering study. So it does require cost and effort and time and approval for Mass Highway to do. But it does allow us to also establish a 20 miles an hour zone in certain areas of the community. We, at this point, do not have any specific recommendations for where we would want to establish these because I think it would require input from the Westford Police Department, the Engineering Department, Public State, Public, the Department of Public Works. But we merely would like town leadership to consider supporting the adoption of this and that we could potentially come back at a later time with some suggestions or recommendations as to where these could be implemented. Generally speaking, when I've looked at how other communities have adopted 17C, they generally bundle 18B in with that adoption. There doesn't need to be anything specifically adopted in this. It's out there ready for us to use. Unlike with 17C, Mass Highway asks that we notify them that we are opting in essentially to that legislation. Next slide, please? In either case, 17C or 18B, if a speed limit is changed, the enforcement of that speed limit does not change. In other words, the penalties involved with violations don't change outside of what we would normally be, what sort of penalties would normally be assessed if we were fined. And for Massachusetts, the base fine for exceeding speed limits is $105. And then for every 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, you're paying additional money on top of that. And then, of course, there's, you know, potential hits to your insurance. So just wanted to call out that just because we're changing the speed limits, the fines are not going to change. Enforcement doesn't change at all. Next slide? So as part of researching this recommendation, the Pedestrian Safety Committee talked with a number of other communities that are near to Westford. We also looked at what other communities within Massachusetts have adopted 17C. As of this time, 62 communities have adopted. And they range in size from big cities to smaller communities. So it's not something that generally, you know, you might see the Somervilles of this world adopt, although I think in this law or this regulation was really meant maybe for a higher-density city like Somerville. But there is still applicability to smaller communities and communities like Westford. Because as you can see, Acton, Bedford, Concord, Sudbury are just four examples of communities that have recently opted into 17C. And speaking with representatives from those communities, it's sort of a mixed bag in terms of how they view it. So what I mean by that is, it's very hard to find any sort of quantifiable measure of success as a result of adoption of 17C or 18B. I like to be quantitatively driven, I like numbers. I was hopeful that somebody would have done a study or that could show us, you know, a reduction in pedestrian injury or fatalities or a reduction in overall speeds. We spoke to Mass Highway about studies of that nature. Unfortunately, Mass Highway said they have not done any studies. They are not knowledgeable about any other studies like that. The communities that we reached out to generally said that they don't have any data on that type of success or failure of the adoption of 17C. They thought that in general, it still was a good thing, hence why they adopted it. But it was hard for them to come up with a measurable, you know, a measure of success, if you will. Concord indicated that there was some confusion in their implementation between their police department and the Department of Public Works. So they cautioned that, you know, you really want to have all the players on the same page in terms of how you want to implement. And we'll go into that a little bit further in more detail later on. And we'll go into that a little bit further in more detail later on. Acton hasn't actually done anything with it, even though they brought it to town meeting and it passed, I think it was in 2020. But they have not put up any signage or anything like that. So at the end of the day, Pedestrian Safety had a lot of internal discussion about, well, what is this really going to do for us? Why are we even contemplating bringing this forward to the Select Board for their consideration? And what we came back with was, one, it gives us some flexibility to change some speed limits. You know, as I talked about, in terms of the overall setting of speed limits, if the community wanted to establish a regulatory change, it is quite a bit of work to do so. And it's not something that could be done on all the roads at once. You're only really looking at very specific sections of roads. So this would allow us to make a, either if we decided to implement on a townwide basis, you know, a townwide change, or we could actually look at it on a street-by-street basis. Mass Highway does recommend that you do it on a townwide basis. These four communities have all implemented in a townwide basis. But also, even though there aren't any studies out there, there's nothing that says this legislation provides this benefit. I think it's safe to assume that people, some segment of the population, does observe speed limits. I'm not going to say we all do, but, you know, I try to for the most part, and I think a lot of other people do. And if just even a segment of the population is now going to observe a smaller, a slower speed that would cover a lot, a potentially large number of roads in the town, lowering overall speeds will have a measurable impact. And if we could go to the next slide, we'll talk about why that is. Thank you. So-
Chris, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up pretty quick, you know, soon, okay?
I'm going to do my very best. This is, we only have a couple more slides to go. Okay? So on this, on this slide here, we have, you know, just some data on not only where fatalities are occurring, mostly on local streets, as what we see in this community here, and that the fact that the number of pedestrian fatalities have been rising over time at a fairly significant clip. Next slide, please? So I think this really, this slide really hones into why this legislation can have some measurable benefit to us. As you can see here, even a small reduction in speed yields a very significant benefit in reduction of serious injury when there's a motorist vehicle, a motorist pedestrian collision. So if you can think about somebody driving from, you know, 30 to 35, and we get them down to 25, and there is an accident, we really have a larger chance of success of that pedestrian walking away without serious injury. Next slide, please? All right, implementation. So the Mass Highway, as I mentioned earlier, requires that a municipality opts into this legislation. We have to essentially let Mass Highway know that we're doing this. There is two ways, as I mentioned earlier, that we can be adopted. It can either be a townwide versus street-by-street. Mass Highway recommends the townwide. Again, that's what most communities have done out of the 62 that have adopted this so far. The vast majority, 95%, have done it on a townwide basis. The Select Board does have the authority to opt into this themselves, but it does seem that a lot of communities do bring this forward to town meeting for a vote. In order for this to be successful, I think there needs to be a lot of public outreach on the part of the town to allow residents to know that this change might be coming. What are the lists of roads that may be impacted? And, you know, that, I think, has taken up, depending on the community, either a townwide mailing has been gone, has gone out to all residents saying, here's a list of roads, color-coded map, or a list of streets to, you know, publish, publishing it on the town's websites and other social media distribution steps. We go to the final slide, please? So at this point, pedestrian safety recommendation is that the Select Board supports the adoption of both of these sections. We hope, as I mentioned earlier, with 18B, the establishment of the special speed zones, that you would help direct pedestrian safety as well as the relevant town staff to investigate more fully potential areas for the establishment of these speed zones. And we can bring that back to you at a later date. Are there any questions at this time?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
Chris, as I read this thing, doesn't, doesn't the annual town meeting have to vote to adopt this? And then after they adopt it, then the Select Board can go about approving speed limit changes?
So the Select Board apparently has the authority to opt into this themselves directly. But as I pointed out, most of the communities that I looked at have brought this forward to town meeting for them, for a greater conversation, so.
Yeah, may I make one more statement?
Of course.
I was, I was reading this Chapter 17C, and the way it says, "The Board of Selectmen" can, in a city or a town that accepts this section in the manner provided in Section 4 of Chapter 4. And Section 4 of Chapter 4 talks about having the legislature of the town opt in. Am I misreading this?
In what sense?
Well, to me, if I read 17C, it says the Board of Selectmen, then talks about Commissioners and Traffic Commission, everything else, that accepts this section in the manner provided in Section 4 of Chapter 4. Well, except that's in that manner of Chapter, Section 4 of Chapter 4, it already says, "in a municipality by vote of the legislative body, subject to the charter of the municipality." So to me, that means, to me, that means the process should be that we take it to the annual town meeting, opt in, and then, then we're free to move ahead with doing something with the speed limits. Now, unless I'm misreading this, I, that's just the way I read it.
I, I think that's a perfectly fine assessment, and I would personally recommend that we bring this forward to town meeting for a brighter discussion and adoption from the town voters.
And then that process would be adoption by annual town meeting, and then the Select Board, then we have the authority to move ahead.
Scott?
Well, here's a couple things. So one is that I agree that whether the Select Board can do it or not, we should go to town meeting with this and get your kind of buy-in. If we're going to enforce it in the town, we should have them buying in on it. Yeah, secondly, yeah, Chris mentioned pedestrians, but we've had more cases of fatalities with bikers than we have had pedestrians. So, you know, there's narrow-windy streets that we'd be worried about with walkers, we're actually worried about with bikers too. And they've actually borne the brunt of it past years or so in town. And then thirdly, we did involve, we did talk to the police department about this, and they were strongly in favor of townwide. It's very, very hard to enforce this thing, street-by-street, and knowing which street is what speed. So they encouraged strongly townwide.
Thanks, Scott. One of my questions was, have the, has the police or the chief of police weighed in on this? So you've just answered my question.
I'm sorry, just to follow up on Scott's comments, so. So as part of doing the research, we did talk with engineering and Westford Police. We had Deputy Chief present at many of our meetings while we were discussing this. We, we had an actual meeting between engineering, some of our engineering consultants, DPW, Westford Police Department this afternoon. Just to, again, make sure we're all on the same page. I did get an email suggesting that the chief of police is now more in favor of a street-by-street approach. I had not, because of the lateness of the communication, have a lot of time to communicate with him about that, so.
Well, let me interrupt you because our chief of police is out there, so.
Perfect.
Chief Chambers, would you like to weigh in? Ah, he's coming.
Hi, sorry about that. When it restarted me, it took a little bit.
It's okay.
We've had ongoing conversations about this. And I know, Andrea, you were part of the last time that this, that this came up, where we tried to do the safety zones through the center of town.
Right in the context of the center, right.
Yep, so, and the deputy chief and I have kind of gone back and forth. The issue that we have with the 1917C is it's going to be incredibly difficult to kind of enforce because of the different types of roads that we have here in town. And that's, that's kind of the major concern. Whatever way the town meeting votes, we obviously will do our best to enforce it. It's just when we look at the way that our roads are designed and built, it's, it would have to only be in the thickly settled and business district areas where it is reduced to 25. We do have several roads that have had engineering studies done and are listed at a different speed limit. So I think it's, that was just a concern. So it's, we don't really have a recommendation at this point because we have spoken with the other police departments that Chris has listed as part of this project as well. Acton hasn't really implemented it. Box Bro still has the 25 mile an hour speed limits in the basement. So there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of feedback that we've been able to get on the impact of public safety. The ones that are showing a noticeable impact have completely different characteristics of their roadways. So we're just a little leery of making a recommendation one way or another because we're just, as we discuss it, it's kind of fleshing out that townwide versus street-by-street. I just think that we need to do a little bit more research on our end before we can make a professional recommendation.
Okay, thank you, certainly understood. Tom?
Sort of a process question. So if what we're deciding is, well, we're not deciding anything. We're thinking about is, how would we decide whether this goes to town meeting or not? So is that, do we want to ask this group to come back after Chief Chambers has had a chance to think about it a little bit more and has a recommendation he can make alongside pedestrian safety? Or how do we think about approaching this?
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, for one, am not ready to make a recommendation tonight. Chris, you've thrown a lot of information at us, which I appreciate. I mean, it's clearly you and your committee have done a great deal of research on this and spent a lot of time on it. I need a little bit more time to digest all of it and, and to think about it. So I'm not prepared to make a recommendation or a decision tonight. I do agree with what John and Scott have already said, which is, whatever we may or may not decide, the final decision rests with town meeting. And, I mean, we can only make a recommendation, but I do believe this would have to, I, I would believe that we should bring this to town meeting for the town meeting to decide this ultimately, this question. And, you know, I think we need to give the police department and Chief Chambers a little bit more time to do, to do whatever research and studying that they need to do. So in terms of moving forward, this is a long-winded, I'm getting back to your question now, Tom. In terms of moving forward, I think, you know, I think if, if this is something we want to recommend, then I think, you know, we can consider it either, you know, at a future meeting, decide whether or not it's something we want to recommend and bring to town meeting. And then it would be probably an article that we can, in conjunction with the Pedestrian Safety Committee, bring forward to town meeting, if that's what we decide to do, for town meeting to vote on it. Makes sense? Okay, Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to Chris. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of information that you're trying to put into that slide deck and explain to us, and it seems like all very complicated stuff. And I'm hoping I can even remember just the three points that you wanted us to take away from it because there was a lot there. I, I saw this as one of the solutions that you're exploring or people are exploring in general, almost as a, as a follow-up to the Boston Road conversation, right, in that construction project and all of the speeding that we have around town. And so I really appreciate that you're trying to explore solutions and that you're bringing different ideas to the table. I know that this was something John has all, had researched, I think, a little bit when we were looking at the Boston Road stuff. So thank you for putting all that time into this. And I, I guess I want to understand sort of a little bit more of the cons. Like, why wouldn't we do this? What's wrong with, with lowering this town, you know, the speed limit? Either if it's street-by-street or townwide? I'm not really clear on that part yet. So as we're continuing to explore, I'd really like to learn more about that, too.
Okay.
Can I, can I respond?
I was just going to say, you look like you had something to say.
Yeah, so, I mean, from a cons perspective, especially from the conversation that we had this afternoon with, with engineering, they did bring up some interesting points that I could be, you could think of as a, as a potential negatives. You know, are there some, some roadways out there that by setting the speed limit to 25 could cause potential accidents? So think of like a really, and I'm trying to think of a road that would fit this criteria, and I can't off the top of my head. But that was one aspect that, you know, if we, we'd set something to too slow of a limit, would that be a problem? I think the, the example that they used was Carlisle Road by Jack Walsh. So if that went from 40 to 25 miles an hour with such an abrupt change of speed between communities or either sections of the road, would that be a problem? The other was actually road rage. If we did let, get the road, speed limits down universally on thickly settled roads, and people started to observe that, would people who don't want to observe that speed limit get even angrier than maybe they do today? And would that lead to some complications? You know, certainly possible. So those were two cons that came up. The third would be the confusion aspect. Just how do residents know where they, what, what speed limit they should be following? A lot of the speed limits that are on our roadways today, again, are not regulatory speed limits. They are statutory, so they actually don't even need to be there. We put them there for, I think, more, hey, let's just educate the, the motorist. There's only a few roadways in town that have regulatory speed limits. Acton Road, Powers Road, Littleton Road, to name three of them. So in most cases, you know, it probably would make sense to certainly identify the roads that are impacted by this rather than just sticking the sign up at the beginning of the community. I think the additional next step might be to, you know, certainly change signage and maybe, you know, identi, identify areas of town that are thickly settled. So the lack of proper education would be a con if we didn't do that because it would lead to confusion, both on the side of the motorist and potentially on people who are enforcing that to the police department.
John?
Just a couple of points. I think on something like Carlisle Road or 110, those are state roads, or 40. And I don't think that would, that speed limit there would change at all. And the other is, I think if we opted into this through annual town meeting, we'd still have the option of moving forward or not. We could leave it as it is, or we could change it.
My understanding is, is that. So essentially, just like, I'm going to use Concord as an example. If we put the signage, we adopted on a townwide basis, and we put signs up at the entries to the town, the borders of the town, we don't necessarily have to change any speed limits. So if a road was already signed at 30, my understanding is that it would still be enforced at 30. And then, you know, that, that's essentially not changing anything. With the exception of roads that don't have signs and are thickly settled, those would now be enforced at 25 versus 30.
Bob Jeffries has a question or a comment, but he has his hand up, so if we could.
Yeah, Chris, the definition of thickly settled, did it say less than 200 feet between structures?
Correct.
Our zoning says we're thickly settled. We have 200-foot frontage. Most of the town would fall under the zoning itself, saying it's thickly settled. So I don't see the difficulty of declaring it entire town because that's how we're zoned.
That's a good point.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Chris, as I said, I think you've given us a lot to think about. You've thrown a lot at us tonight, and certainly appreciate it. So I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight. But we will certainly bring it back for further discussion before the board and also between now and further discussion as we, some of us look at your presentation a little bit more carefully. If we've got further questions for your committee, we'll certainly forward them to you. And we will also wait, also ask Chief Chambers and the police department to do whatever analysis they would like to do so that they could come back with a recommendation at a future meeting as well.
I'm perfectly fine with that, but it seems a little open ended. So, you know, can we? I mean, we can't just say, hey, well, we'll get back to you at some point. What are we going to get back to us in January, February? What do we want to set as a deadline? Otherwise, this is not going to go anywhere, Andrea.
Well, with all due respect, we have a lot of stuff. We're at the end of the year, we're at holidays. I mean, I'm not going to string you out, you know. I mean, I understand that we'd like to bring it forward. If we are going to bring it forward, that we would be aiming to do it at town meeting, which has now been set for June. So I get that, but I just can't give you a specific date right now.
Well, can you ballpark it? I mean, as a committee, you guys must have some feeling for when this might be able to be something you want to revisit. You all have talked about wanting more time to absorb. I totally get that. There is a lot there. I just need to know when I need to bring it back in front of you. Otherwise, I won't know. So I just need, I need a little guidance here. You want me to look for March or February? I mean, tell me what you feel would be acceptable.
Why don't you look towards the beginning of February?
I will certainly do that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Alrighty, have a good night.
You too. Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay. We're at our 8:40 PM item, which is old and new business. So we have a request from Westford Cat to provide a letter of support for House Bill number 130, an act relative to a streaming entertainment operator's use of the public rights of way. Tom, you want to just briefly tell us about this?
So House Bill 130 would address a problem with local cable access television funding, which is, it's basically set up for cable television. There's a royalty payment basically that comes to the town for the purposes of community access television for cable television. But that does not apply to people who are using the same right of way, same infrastructure, same cable coming to their house that are only using streaming services. So lots and lots of people are making the choice to stop using cable television but just use internet and then stream all their content, including Westford Cat content. And in that case, Westford Cat doesn't get any money to provide those services. So we would, in supporting this, we would just be supporting this house bill, which be, which is meant to address that problem and apply the same royalty if it's using the same right of way and the same infrastructure, whether it's streaming or cable TV.
Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to provide a letter of support for House Bill 130?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will do that. John?
Don't we have a letter that's already in the packet for your signature?
I believe that there is a draft letter in the packet, which now that we have voted to support, we consent, okay? All right. We have a request to approve the Mass School Building Authority supplement vote for the Lloyd G Blanchard Middle School Roof Replacement Project. I don't see Paul Fox, Jody, do you just want to update us?
I am here.
There he is. I'm sorry, there you are.
No worries. So this memo before you is just some supplemental language vote. There is a little discrepancy for the MSBA vote. And so this is just a clarity that was language drafted by our legal counsel and approved by the MSBA legal counsel. Just to really confirm that the intent is exactly what the language was voted on at town meeting, that Article 2 for $90,000 to enter into schematic design funding. If approved by your committee, school committee had already approved it last Monday, then we'll be able to just really check all the boxes that the MSBA needs to continue on in this project.
Great. Jody?
Yes, so I think it's important that you, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the resolution as printed in your packet unless you want to read it because it is exact language we need.
How about if we just have a motion to approve as, as written in our packet?
So moved.
How about I do that exactly right now?
Okay. And a second, somebody, okay. All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a request from the Economic Development Committee to update their charge. And really, the update of their charges simply to add that we also consider middlesex 3 as part of their charge. So really doesn't change the substance of their charge at all. It just broadens it a little bit. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. And last, I would propose that absent any emergency situation coming up that the board has to deal with between now and the end of the year, that we cancel our meeting for December 28th since it falls in school vacation and in between the holidays and schedule our next meeting for the second Tuesday in January. And I'm thinking that probably nobody is going to have any objection to that.
So moved.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Board reports and updates. Anybody have any board reports and updates? Okay, John, and then Jody.
Did we, we're going to consider our select board meeting calendar?
Oh, you're right. I forgot about that. Thank you, Ms., thank you. We got our select board meeting calendar. And I think we, as I recall, yes, we have, did we have one issue? Oh, maybe not.
Yes.
Yes, we did. It just isn't showing up on it now. But as I recall, our second meeting in April, our second meeting in April?
September.
In September. I'm sorry, September. There we are. Conflicts with Russia Shana. So we're going to, I don't know that we need to decide right now, but we're going to need to move that meeting. And we can move it, we could move it to, I guess, maybe my suggestion would be to wait and see where we are in September to see if we need that meeting or not or if we can just go to the second meeting in October.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So why decide that now? Although we may need it, we may need to schedule it because I suspect that although we haven't scheduled it yet, yet, our, our, our fall town meeting will be somewhere at the end of October. So. But we can, we can postpone until we get closer to determine when we decide when we have to meet. So. But other than that, the calendar looks good to me. Jody?
Yes, there was another problem. November 8th is Election Day and we're not supposed to meet on Election Day, so.
Okay.
That's another date we should at least hold on if you want. So maybe hold on those two dates and, okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, now we're at board reports and updates. Anybody have any board reports or updates? Anita?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to share kind of a concern that I have. It's not on any board or anything that I sit on. But I was watching one of the meetings last night for the Board of Health and I felt like there was some miscommunication that was communicated through that meeting. And that was just a meeting that I had caught. And I was around like the center building or just like some processes or logistics. I feel like there's just a lot of misunderstanding. And I don't know how many, how often that happens, I guess, across the boards in general and committees. So this is just kind of like an open plea, I think, to all of the boards around town that to not make assumptions and to reach out to the, to us or to Jody about information on clarifying stuff. I think like, I think misinformation was shared and then it just kind of snowballed into incorrect assumptions. And I just, that was a really big concern for me. It was really hard for me to watch and I wasn't able to log in in time to kind of clarify. But I mean, I can follow offline and stuff with you, Jody, or with the Board of Health directly. But I am just, I was really concerned watching that movie that there was misinformation and I think we're going to get a letter as a result from the center about the center building. So I just wanted to raise that publicly.
Thank you. Okay, we have minutes for approval. Minutes from our November 9th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to approve and release those minutes?
So moved.
All those, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Jody, it's all yours. Town managers report.
Yes, so I do have Pam Hicks at the meeting if you'd like to have her speak. But Betty Ann, who we honored earlier today, has retired and her hours had been reduced for accommodation. And now that she is leaving, we would like to increase those back up to what they were before she started. I mean, before we reduced them. So if you have any questions about that, we did put in your packet how we would fund that, which is basically through Comp Reserve through the rest of the year. And I do have it in the budget for '23. However, that budget, you know, is not done yet, so.
Well, I certainly think that, you know, given Pam's memo, she's made a very good case for why the hours should be increased back up to 37 and a half hours a week. Clearly, our HR department is, you know, dealing with ever more, not only more issues, but more complicated issues over the last year. So I think she makes a very good case for increasing those hours. I don't know if anybody else has any questions for Pam or if there's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, thanks, John. All right. All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
So then, secondly, we did get a letter from Town Council that John Giorgio is planning to mostly retire. He is planning to continue with the town on a limited basis but make Greg Corbo our lead town council with Jonathan Silverstein kind of the second. And so I just wanted to make sure you all know that. And that's happening January 1st.
May I suggest that the board send a letter thanking John Giorgio for his years of service to us and for his time that he's spent with us? And I'm happy to draft that with Jody.
Good idea.
I mean, he was, he was like an understatement of law.
He really was.
He could put up with us.
And so then next, I want to request approval for the following grants. Mast Department of Energy Resources for a municipal energy technical assistance grant in the amount of $15,000. Maya, our insurance carrier for the management software program I mentioned earlier for the facilities department in the amount of $10,000. And the contracts consulting engineering services for design and engineering services for the HVAC replacement at the Cameron Senior Center in the amount of $100,000. Nezra Engineering for design services for the Colonel John Robinson School Playground, the amount of $54,000. Houston Galveston Area Council for an interlocal contract to perform governmental functions and services for the fire department. That is to purchase the ambulance, which is a little bit lower down. We're saving money by buying it in this method. Natural Systems Utilities for a one-year contract extension for wastewater treatment plant operations as requested by the water department. And a contract amendment to the Town of Westford Health Insurance Trust Agreement. Oh, okay, yes. So this is, I'm sorry. This is an amendment to the trust agreement that you recently approved.
Jody, I have a question?
Yeah.
When I looked at it last night, it looked like in the first part of the agreement that you had deleted school committee as being a member. But when you go to the signature page on the last page, you still have school committee on that page. So you just need to delete the school committee signature line?
Okay. And the reason why is we did ask the school committee if they wanted to be on the trust and they didn't feel it was necessary. So we didn't catch that when you approved it. So that's why we're removing it. And also, we didn't have the number right, which we are, thank you, Anita, we are correcting that. And we decided to elect a clerk, so we added the clerk. So that's what the changes are. And thank you for bearing with us while we get this document in final shape. But as John said, great first meeting that took a lot of great actions and you'll be hearing more about that as we move forward. So that's to approve the amendment. Purchase orders, this Houston Galveston Area Council for $353,000. It's actually $426, not 25 as is in the packet. And then Nancy Burns for Upper Merrimack Valley Reserve Court. The amount of that is actually $47,000 in '18, not $57,000. And then finally, Stryker Medical for equipment and materials for a power load cot and stair chair for the ambulance at $24,368.16.
Is there a motion to approve the grants, contracts and purchase orders?
As amended?
Amended, yeah. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to waive correspondence, reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Everybody, just all those in favor? And then before we adjourn, since this is the last meeting of the select board for the year 2021, it has once again been an interesting year for all of us and a year once again that presented challenges for all of us. We'd like to thank everybody, all of our town employees, our town boards, our commissioners, our volunteers and also our residents for all of their help and for all of their commitment, their dedication and their kindness to one another. And especially, special thanks to Jody and Eric for continuing to lead us through this pandemic. We wish everybody a very safe and healthy holiday season. Stay well, be safe and hopefully have time with your family and friends to enjoy. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? And all those in favor? Good night, Westford. Everybody be well. Everybody stay safe.
Yes. Good night. See you next year.